Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the August 9th, 2021 City Council meeting. I'll now call the meeting to order. Please note that this meeting is being attended by City Council and staff via Zoom teleconference. Thank you for your patience as we continue to navigate city business through this meeting process. For the benefit of the public and as required by the Brown Act, the vote will be by roll call. City Clerk, would you please take the roll?
Yes, Mayor Kalmit.
Present.
Mayor Protem Verapapa is on his way in. Councilmember Moore.
Here.
Councilmember Sastaric.
Here.
And Councilmember Masalabet.
Here.
We have a corner.
Thank you very much. It's time for approval of the agenda and waiver of the full reading of resolutions and ordinance. By motion to the City Council, this is the time to notify the public of any changes to the agenda and/or rearrange the order of the agenda. Does anyone wish to pull a consent calendar item? Okay, I would like to pull item E. And City Clerk, do we have any supplemental communications?
Yes, four supplemental, I'm sorry, five supplemental communications were received. They've been distributed to council and made available to the public on the city's website.
Very good, thank you. So I will call for a motion and a second for the items not pulled from the consent calendar.
I move approval of the agenda except for item E.
Do we have a second? Please. Second. Thank you. Could we have a roll call vote?
Mayor Kalmit, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Verapapa is not in the meeting as of yet. Councilmember Sastaric, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Masalabet, how do you vote?
Yes.
All right, thank you, that passes 4-0. Okay, now it's time for presentations and recognitions. I'll call upon our Finance Director, City Treasurer Kelly Telford on a COVID-19 funding update.
Thank you very much. Tonight, I would like to give you an update on the various funding sources we have received related to COVID-19 and what each of those funding sources can be used for. A lot has changed over the past year and a half, and things continue to change today. Next slide, please. Since the COVID-19 pandemic started in March 2020, the city has received funding from nine sources. This slide shows a quick reference list of those nine sources to date. Next slide. Some of this is going to be repetitive as we went over it last year when we started receiving funding from federal sources, but I wanted to give you an update of where we're at with some of these today. First, let's discuss the FEMA Public Assistance Grant. This is the one that we've been talking about since day one, where FEMA, through the declaration of the emergency, will reimburse us for 100% of eligible costs. You may recall that originally FEMA was only reimbursing us for 75% of costs, but this has since changed to 100%. This is the most restrictive of all of the funding sources that the city has received and only pays for costs that were not originally budgeted for, such as overtime, PPE, like face masks, gloves, sanitizing products and equipment, and other materials and supplies that the city would not have needed if COVID-19 hadn't occurred. We've been submitting the reimbursement packages and will continue to submit them until the emergency is closed out. That's why you see the status as ongoing. Next slide, please. The next funding source is the CARES Act funding, which the city has actually received three grants. Two were from the County of Orange and one was from the state of California. For the County of Orange grants, one was for $562,000, and every dollar of this went back into the Seal Beach Business Community in the form of small business grants. The second grant for $204,000 provided for reimbursement of costs similar to FEMA. However, they did change the requirements late in the program to make it less restrictive, which allowed us to reimburse the general fund for the direct public safety response to COVID-19. This was fully utilized for public safety costs for the police department, marine safety, and public works. So as we stand to date, both of these two county grants have been fully expended. Next slide, please. The city also received CARES Act grants from the state of California totaling $308,000. This is very similar to the county money that we received and provides for reimbursement costs similar to FEMA. And again, just like with the state funding, they ended up changing the requirements to make them less restrictive, and it allowed us to reimburse the general fund for the direct public safety response for COVID-19. And as of now, these funds have been fully expended. Next slide, please. The city was also awarded an additional $50,000 in community development block grant funds from the County of Orange. This grant was fully utilized in support of the city's temporary outdoor dining program that council approved in June 2020 and has today been fully expended. Next slide, please. In the spring, the city was awarded $77,000 in funds from the County of Orange General Fund to provide for another round of small business grants. This one was unique in that it was not a federal grant. Rather, the County Board of Supervisors approved funding for each supervisory district to help the business community. As of today, these funds have been fully expended. Next slide, please. We're going to spend a little bit of time on this slide because I know it's probably of the most interest to council and to the community. The newest funding source comes from the American Rescue Plan Act, commonly referred to as ARPA. These funds come to us from the United States Department of Treasury, and the city expects to get nearly 6.3 million, based on the most recent estimates available. We did receive 50% of this in July 2021, so just last month, and the remainder is expected next July in 2022. There's a wide range of allowable expenses for ARPA funds. I'll go over some of them in a little bit of detail. The first allowable expense is responding to the public health emergency and the negative economic impacts caused by COVID-19. These are going to be costs very similar to other funding sources, like PPE, overtime, but they are adding additional assistance programs, such as allowing for vaccine incentives, return-to-work incentives, and eviction prevention programs. There are a lot of other allowable costs under this umbrella, but the one that most of the cities are talking about is the provision that allows for an investment in improving outdoor spaces. For example, investments in parks, public plazas, and other public outdoor recreation spaces that promote healthier living environments and outdoor recreation and socialization. We have all seen the push to get people outside, and it looks like the federal government is providing a resource to cities to rebuild recreational facilities. In the second bullet point under allowable expenses, you can see revenue losses are an allowable cost. The intention of this was to allow cities to recoup lost revenues from the decline in the economy from the COVID-19 pandemic. When we received the guidelines for this funding source, it got a little bit tricky because they're doing a very complex calculation to determine how much a city can claim for revenue losses. And they're attempting to apply that standard across all cities uniformly. This has been the subject of a lot of debate between us Finance Directors and the U.S. Department of Treasury because a lot of cities similar to Seal Beach, we passed a transaction tax in 2018, just like our Measure BB. And ultimately, the way they're doing this calculation ends up penalizing us and the end result is us being able to claim less revenue losses. On the surface, it looks like it actually might show that there's no revenue loss at all, which we all know is not the case. We, along with many other cities across California, submitted comments to the U.S. Department of Treasury a couple of weeks ago, requesting them to specifically look at these items and identify, really to look and make sure that we're not losing out on the revenue loss opportunity just because our council and our community took action to help address some of our financial challenges from previous years. This one, I do anticipate we're going to have more information on in the coming weeks, as the next two or three months go by as well. It's still being evaluated, and as of today, we still don't have an answer on a final decision for this. Another allowable use is infrastructure improvements related to water, sewer, and broadband projects. And then the fourth item that they're allowing, which I was surprised is a separate section in the guidelines altogether, is premium pay for essential workers. I mentioned these guidelines that the Department of Treasury has issued. These guidelines have actually been updated already three times in the past two months. And with the recent comments that many of us submitted, the deadline was July 16th. The most recent update that was issued was July 19th, and they did not address any of the questions and comments that we had previously posed. So we do anticipate that these guidelines will be updated yet again. And each time they update those, they tend to broaden the allowable uses. Because of that, we are not making any recommendations at this time on how we should use the funds. We really want to wait until there's a full scope of allowable uses so that we can make a good decision. We've, in finance, we've learned from the CARES Act funding that making those decisions really early on provided some challenges from an accounting perspective, and we're hoping to prevent that with this ARPA funding. So we will look to bring additional recommendations to council on this particular item in the coming months. Next slide, please. So we did have a call last week with the County of Orange. There's been a lot of conversation about how cities are going to be reimbursed for the staff time associated with staffing vaccine clinics. The county decided last week that they're going to move forward with a mutual aid agreement with CalOES and FEMA. So we're actually going to be bringing an agreement forth in September to City Council to be able to be a part of this mutual aid agreement so the city can be reimbursed for the staff time that we had put in for our employees to work at those various vaccine events. I'll have a little bit more information on this when we bring this item back to you in September. Next slide, please, and this is the last one. So last year, the city received word from OCTA of the desire to assist where they could. And with senior mobility being down, OCTA saw the opportunity to move dollars into another senior program, which is senior meals. As you may know, the number of senior meals the city provided increased substantially with COVID-19. And with many seniors not leaving their homes, city staff made daily deliveries of meals to over 85 seniors in Seal Beach and up to 200 seniors on a weekly basis. OCTA has allowed us to go back to March 2020 and is picking up the cost for the increase in transportation costs up to our annual contract amount. And since we were under for the 2021 fiscal year, we were actually able to recoup quite a bit of costs. So that summarizes the nine funding sources we have to date. I would not be surprised if there are a couple more sources on the horizon. And we will continue bringing updates back to council as we receive them. That concludes my presentation, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Kelly. Next is oral communications. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on any item not on the agenda unless authorized by law. No other business shall be considered. All email comments to the city clerk received before the start of the meeting were distributed to City Council and made available to the public on the city's website. Email comments received after the start of the meeting will be forwarded to City Council after the meeting. City Clerk, do we have any emailed comments?
Yes, Mayor, one email comment was received, and it has been distributed to council and made available to the public on the city's website.
Thank you very much. City Attorney's Report, Mr. Steele.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Prior to the meeting this evening, all five council members met in closed session regarding the items on the posted agenda and took no reportable action on any item.
All right, thank you. City Managers' Report, City Manager Ingram.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, no items to report tonight, thank you.
All right, time for council comments. General Councilmember Comments and Reporting pursuant to AB 1234. We'll start with Councilmember Moore.
I have no comments tonight, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Sastaric.
Thank you, Mayor. I attended a Regional Military Affairs Committee meeting. And at that meeting, we had a presentation by OCFA Division One Battalion Chief Ron Roberts. And he gave an extensive report on firefighting helicopters. Talked about the new Chinook CH47 helitankers, which can carry 3,000 gallons of water. A couple of those, along with a couple of the Bell helicopters we've had in the past that carry less water, and some Saborsky helicopters that all get together and help during the fire season. So very informative, and he did a great job. And I thank Chief Roberts very much for the report. Also at this meeting, the base over there released an environmental assessment for the Joint Forces Training Base Solar Energy Project. They are looking at building or putting, having someone come in and put a couple of solar arrays over there, which will contribute to the regional electric grid. And it will also make it possible for them in the event of a catastrophe, attack, or just a major outage, to be able to generate enough electricity to support the installation in their role as an emergency command center. So anyway, there's a lot of information in this, and you can find a copy of it at the Los Almeos Rossmore Library or the Mary Wilson Library. Comments are being accepted now from July 25th up through, excuse me, August 24th, 2021. And you may also obtain an electronic copy of the documents by contacting sampet@sam.pett@tetra tech.com. So anyone who's interested in this can be sure and check it out. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Shelley. Councilmember Verapapa.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Kalmit. Nothing to report, but I did want to give a big thank you to Public Works and Landscaping and Parks and Rec for all the recent work done, specifically the pothole hauling around town. That stuff doesn't go unnoticed. Landscaping extensively in and around town. And most recently, some pavement striping around McGaw Elementary School. Really appreciate the work that everybody's doing near and around there. I just, a quick reminder that school at McGaw does start August 16th next week, I believe it is. So get ready for all the kids and all the traffic out there. And please be careful and drive very slowly in and around town, and especially around the school. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Mike. Councilmember Masalabet.
I have just a few things. The Orange County Sanitation District had a board meeting a couple of weeks ago, and it's my pleasure to report to you that there's been an audit, and everything looks good. Everything, all the regulations were followed. So that's a good positive. Also, another positive is the near completion of the sewer lines in Westminster. So soon they'll be leaving there, and it'll be a completed job. And once again, the OC SAN has proven its ability to stay within its budget and to be in a good position for financing mechanisms to complete projects. And I'm happy to say that it's a well-run district for us. Another well-run district, of course, is mosquitoes. The Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control is busy. Most of you have heard that there was a West Nile virus incident in Garden Grove. And we'll see if it grows from there. We know that it'll probably be an active season, so be careful of what's around you, who's keeping water in those dishes in the pots, in their flower pots. Maybe there's a pool near your home that is not used and may be turning green. If you would report it to Orange County Vector Control, they will send someone out to investigate. And if you're having a problem with mosquitoes in general, give them a call, ask them for tips, and perhaps then an employee will be able to come out and take a look at what's around your garden and part of the neighborhood. So be aware that there is something you can do. It might not end your mosquito issue, but it could decrease it. So that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you. I have a couple of items. Just to let folks know that we're very close to having final approval for the sand replenishment project for Surfside, which is several years in arrears. And this is something that, you know, all of our elected folks have been fighting for. And finally, Congresswoman Michelle Steele was able to get a final voice and get an appropriation in the amount of around $15.5 million, which will go a long way toward accomplishing this. We still need the final approval from the Army Corps of Engineers that it's going to be on their, what's called their work program. And this will help to protect what amounts to 17 miles of coastline ranging from, you know, our westerly border all the way down to Newport Beach. So hopefully that'll happen. At one of the several mayor's conference calls that I'm on, with regard to Senate Bill 9 and Senate Bill 10, which have wide-ranging consequences with regard to housing density and what folks will be allowed to build by right. They actually had the guest speaker of Scott Wiener, who is the author of SB 10 and the co-author of SB 9. And he makes a very, you know, in his mind, a very strong case that we need to allow multifamily dwellings on single lots. And so we have to be, you know, very attentive to what the results of this are going to be. It's already passed the Assembly, I believe, and now it goes to the Senate. So we have to keep an eye on that. Very important, I want to make an announcement. This has been done today via press release and will be on our website. But since the City of Seal Beach Council at our last meeting approved the Articles of Incorporation and the initial bylaws for the inception of the Seal Beach Historic Resources Foundation, and we are ready to begin receiving applications for the initial five-member board. And the makeup of the board will be decided by the council based on the ability of the candidates to invest the time and effort during this initial period to get the foundation up and running. So you do not actually have to be a resident of the city or of any particular district. So those applications can be found on the website. It's actually a standard board appointment application. And so I encourage those people who think they would have an interest, you know, in serving on this, please get those applications in. The official deadline is August 27th, so that still gives us a couple of weeks. And spread the word, if you happen to know somebody that would have an interest in serving on this board. Potentially, we're going to be talking to Lions Club regarding the Little Blue House, which, you know, they basically control at this point, as well as the Red Car. So again, I encourage participation in that. And that's all that I have for my questions and reports. Next item is the consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and are enacted by a single motion with the exception of items removed by council members. So I'd like a motion and a second, please.
Motion.
I'm not sure who won, but we have a motion, how about a second?
Sandra for the motion.
Okay. Was that you, Mike?
No. This is Tom.
That was Tom.
Okay, good, Tom, seconded by Councilmember Moore. May we have a vote, please, City Clerk?
And just for the record, item E has been removed.
Yes, correct. So.
Mayor Kalmit, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Mayor Protem Verapapa, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Sastaric, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Masalabet, how do you vote?
Yes.
That passes 5-0. The item that I chose to remove is the second reading and adoption of Ordinance 1691, which is the ordinance amending Chapter 8.20 of the Seal Beach Municipal Code to amend regulations for head-in parking in the city parking lots. The question being, our current ordinance calls for folks that have backed into a parking space as opposed to heading in are subject to a citation. And at the time, I did vote in the affirmative, but I had raised a couple of questions as to possible alternatives to this. And what I would like to do is to move this forward so that we could possibly entertain some additional discussion on this. What I, in fact, would be proposing is that, number one, that we replace the existing head-in-only signs that are in the beach parking lots, the 8th Street, 10th Street, and 1st Street lots, that we are now possibly recognizing as being not optimum in terms of their being able to be seen or read. And I would like to have warnings rather than citations issued for the rest of this calendar year to give us a better assessment of if visitors to our city or residents... if visitors to our city or residents uh want to park in the beach lots and are not familiar necessarily with the fact that you're supposed to uh head in only um that perhaps we need to do a better job in um letting them know that that's gonna be a necessity. And if you don't, you're gonna be fined, um rather than having over four thousand people sighted uh who I don't believe are necessarily scofflaws. And so if there is add that, however, that would not uh affect um the issue of having to have a front license plate. Um, you know, unless it's not available in your state, those would still be citable. So I would like to uh get the council's comments and possibly support to uh act on this. Uh, and I will take the comments and then I'd like a clarification from our city attorney in terms of how we would uh proceed. So um let's start uh with Councilman Moore.
Yeah, I guess if we did it do that that way, you're proposing we revisit this and at that one point?
Yes.
In at the January or something?
Yes. Was there a question or an opinion along with that?
I guess, I mean, if if there's been uh four thousand tickets or so, I think it's pretty evident that there's an issue where people are getting heavily ticketed that don't realize that that's uh the, you know, the law there. And I just, I just feel kind of how I originally felt about this issue.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Masalavat?
I do have kind of a comment. Um, I agree with you, Mr. Mayor, that we need to take a look at how the signing uh is in place, what signing is in place and what we need to make it more legible for people to see and understand. Um, I'm not looking for a plethora of signage in the lots, but um some distinctive signage that people will be able to see when they come in or while they're driving around. Um, I I agree with this. And um I'm looking forward to the information that we can get from what you're proposing.
Thank you. Councilmember Sistarsik.
So, sorry. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, yes, I, that's fine, whatever. You know, if we want to study it, that's fine with me. I was just concerned, you know, my own experience that I wasn't sure the the signs were visible, but I, and I, I think I mentioned that a warning was okay with me. I was just concerned that people weren't seeing them and were getting ticketed when that wasn't, our intent wasn't a trap of some kind. It was just to to have it be a certain way. So uh uh looking at the, looking at the numbers or seeing what happens when we, if we give a warning, especially if it's out of town, people who just don't see it, that uh sounds fine to me. And then, and then I think um Councilman Moore was asking, would it come back at the end of the year to tell us how we did or?
Well, that would be, that would be my proposal. Number one, that we would tabulate the number of warnings that were issued. And then, you know, bring that information back to council, uh, you know, at the beginning of the new year, calendar year, and then make a decision at that point whether we want to continue to um change the ordinance or keep the existing ordinance with improved signage.
Okay, that sounds fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Vera Papa?
Yeah, I would agree with that, too. That sounds like a good idea and a good review um to look at and monitor. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, and I've already pretty much made my comments. So I'd asked our city attorney how we proceed and and what would be, you know, the action for this evening.
I, can I speak one more time?
Sure.
Um, is is on the technology side, uh if we give a warning for the first time, is that, is the technology capable of seeing that the person was issued a warning the first time and giving a ticket the second time they um after they've received a first warning?
Um, I would have to defer to uh our chief or his representative.
Good evening, Mayor. And to answer your question, Councilmember Moore, yes, those are all tracked into our current system and we're able to track any kind of warning that is provided, given that they do have a license plate that we're able to tie it to. So the answer to your question is yes.
Okay, so that that might be a suggestion for staff if it, as another alternative to provide a first, you know, when we do revisit this in January, to provide a first-time warning and then the second time they get a ticket if they've committed that offense again.
I agree. Good point. Thank you. So uh, city attorney, in uh Craig, can you give us some direction at this point?
Uh, yes, Mayor. Um, well, you don't have to take or uh take any action on item E. The ordinance doesn't take effect if there's, if there's no vote on it. So um I think, I think staff has um adequate direction based on the comments of the council. And uh if you just take no action on item E, that's the way that staff can proceed.
Very good. Thank you. So um seeing that we seem to have consensus on support of doing that, then let's take no action. Okay, we have no public hearings under unfinished or continued business. Uh, we're going to get a report on our local coastal program. Um, the land use plan and the Coastal Commission's comments. So we'll have uh Community Development or Interim Community Development Director Barry Curtis. Please give us that report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Um, the item before you this evening is before you this evening in order to provide a status update on the effort to establish a local coastal program for the city of Seal Beach and to bring the city council's attention to a few of the key um review comments received from the Coastal Commission um as a result of its review of the draft local coastal program land use plan. Um, the staff team presented this item to the city council on June twenty-eighth. Um, the staff team consists of city staff and staff from Michael Baker International, the city's consultant. Um, after discussion, the city council indicated desire for additional time to consider the issues and directed staff to return at a later date when the council could work through each of the items. The effort, um as you know, to complete the local coastal program has been a lengthy process. The draft LCP was um completed about a year and a half ago. The draft plan was then submitted to the Coastal Commission. After its review, the commission forwarded its comments back to the city for consideration. The city staff team um has reviewed the Coastal Commission's comments and most have either been um addressed or are currently being addressed. However, there are a few comments that we believe warrant bringing this to the attention of the city council. These consist of five items and these were presented to the council on June twenty-eighth and will be the focus of tonight's presentation and discussion as well. The Michael Baker team has been administering the LCP process for the city and developing our LCP. At this time, I'd like to introduce to you Noel Steele from Michael Baker International. Noel has a brief presentation for you that will cover the key review comments that are, um, were received by the Coastal Commission. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll turn over the presentation to Noel.
Thank you.
Thanks, Barry. Hello, Mr. Mayor, all council members. Thank you so much for having me again. Um, I, we can go ahead and get started on the next slide. We'll give a brief recap of um what we talked about last time and include some recommendations and some items for further consideration to council. Um, but just to give us a quick background, uh the local coastal program consists of two elements, the land use plan and the local implementation plan. For the purposes of our policy discussion, we'll really be focusing on the land use plan. This is the item where uh Coastal Commission has provided their comments and is our area of focus for this evening. The benefits of having a certified LCP, obviously, the city is able to um issue permits and you are delegated your permit authority from the Coastal Commission to the city. And um and the permit process is streamlined instead of through Coastal Commission. Um, next slide. And as Barry mentioned up at the front, this is just a summary of where we are in the process. As we provided our, uh, these comments to city council on June twenty-eighth, we are um hoping to seek some feedback on the comments received and hopefully are available to answer any additional questions that might come up. Uh, next slide. All right, so with our first comment as it relates to sea level rise, um I'd like to give a little bit of further of an explanation as compared to last time. Um, the intent of this comment from Coastal Commission and specifically the requested text that is added in double underline is really to formalize two coastal act sections, the three oh two three five and three oh two five three. Um, and both of these items relate to future construction of shoreline production. Um, the intent behind these policies is just to internalize the risks of building in an inherently hazardous area. Um, and these residents in Seal Beach are subject to both of these coastal commission requirements when they permit projects through the Coastal Commission. Um, next slide. And similar to our um our requested policy language that was on the previous slide, um this slide includes the, the item as the conditional approval. Um, applicants shall waive rights to construct such devices that may exist under applicable law. Um, again, this formalizes the, the same coastal act sections. And as a final note, deed restrictions have been applied by the Coastal Commission to properties in areas of known hazards um dating back to the nineteen nineties. So this is um fairly standard practice for the last thirty-odd years or so uh in terms of coastal commission behavior. And um and again, that the policy uh requested additional text is um is just to formalize existing coastal act language. Uh, next slide, please. And while this item is um similar in nature as it relates to sea level rise, we're getting a little bit um more specific in terms of its reference to land divisions, um including the, the items listed here, lot splits, lot line adjustments, certificates of compliance. Um, to add a bit more detail on this item, our, our recommendation on the first policy is to include a specific dust uh definition as to what constitutes a beachfront lot. As you can see, this um, this policy is specifically um specifically limited to uh those subdivisions and land divisions that would create new beachfront lots. Um, and so that would be a text addition that's fairly easy for Michael Baker to incorporate into the LCP and um wouldn't create any additional uh work efforts on, on that end. Um, the second policy recommendation is a little bit more specific and would require applicants to demonstrate that the project is designed to avoid or avoid and mitigate flooding hazards. And those would include potential flooding hazards associated with sea level rise. Um, but similar to the way, um, similar to the way applicants are, are required to show that they are um mitigating for hazard or erosion or geologic hazards, um it's, it's really required that the city, um, the city must find or the city must identify these findings consistent with the policy at the term of um, at the term of permit issuance. So again, just to reiterate, our recommendation would be to outline specifically what a beachfront lot is and and uh to, to formalize the, the text that is um requested in double underline. Um, next slide. All right, um, this is our item on public access. Um, and so as many people here know, um, a coastal commission priority is to ensure public access to the California coastline. Um, however, this policy priority area can be in conflict with the property rights of private or gated communities along the coast that were often um created prior to the establishment of the Coastal Act in nineteen seventy-two. And so Surfside Colony is one example of, of such a community. There, there are several up and down the California coast. Um, this part one of the comment, uh, the Coastal Commission framed it as a way just to open discussion regarding the recommended policy inclusion. Um, Michael Baker's recommended response on behalf of the city really would be to initiate that conversation and understand um, understand coastal's perspective. Um, our recommendation would be to remind them that Surfside Colony is operating within their rights um and, and their property rights to maintain a private community and um to understand that if this policy is um, is something that's absolutely necessary for Seal Beach to incorporate in their LCP. Um, to date, uh, Michael Baker and um and city staff has not discussed uh this policy language with coastal yet. So this would be the first time that we are discussing with them. Um, part two would be, or part two recommends rephrasing, um, rephrasing LUP language content and furthering the discussion of public access in Surfside Colony. The intent, um, the intent that of the language in bold that I wrote was just to provide background information and was really to demonstrate that Surfside Colony is not expanding outside of their existing footprint. Um, clarification upon the text, it, it should say redevelopment instead of new development. Um, it's one of those minor language items that in a policy perspective has a, has a significantly different meaning. Um, but you know, the average person, it might not, uh, might not mean too many, too much difference. So changing the term from redevelopment uh should satisfy, um, satisfy coastal's understanding on this item. And um again, their, their discussion uh regarding how public access may be maximized uh would include in coordination with the response on, on part one above, just to open the floor for discussion and to understand um where we could potentially negotiate with Coastal Commission. Um, and then our next slide, please. This is our policy question from Coastal Commission as it relates to low-cost visitor-serving accommodations. Um, so under Coastal Act Section three oh two one three, uh lower-cost visitor-serving accommodations shall be protected, encouraged, and where feasible, provided. So uh some background, as the short-term rentals and other home-sharing websites have become more popular in recent years, Coastal Commission has provided some policy guidance to regulate short-term rentals as an opportunity to increase public access opportunities. And the background on our side of things is that we've been told by um city staff and, and our discussion with council last time is that there may be some um interest in opening up the existing short-term rental program, um, open up the applications for new permits. Um, and while we know that uh it's likely that, um, or it's unlikely that the short-term rentals will um constitute low-cost accommodations, this is just an opportunity to reevaluate the, the issuing of new short-term rental permits. Coastal Commission cannot um mandate cost of units um or anything of that sort. And generally speaking, coastal has opposed, um, they've opposed vacation rental bans in the coastal zone, citing bans as inconsistent with the Coastal Act, but um they do support regulating short-term rentals. Um, so we would just need further clarification from council or staff if there is interest in opening the, the rental permits for new applications or if the preference is to the, uh, keep the moratorium as it is. Either option is fine. We would just need um further direction before we uh return to conversation with Coastal Commission. Um, next slide, please. This is um our comment on parking. Um, from our understanding, the parking meters in um Seal Beach and in Old Town were installed on Main Street in the nineteen sixties. Um, and just for reference, the Coastal Act was uh enacted in nineteen seventy-two. Um, it looks like the, based on the history of um, history of the CDPs, that the parking meters were removed in nineteen seventy-six. Um, and then in two thousand and four, the Coastal Commission um approved a CDP to authorize um parking meters on Main Street, restrictions of parking um on Fifth Street to Twelfth Street and um some after-the-fact approval for um parking meter spaces along Main Street as well. Um, this, there's less of a tangible recommendation on this item. We would just um appreciate the, the um assistance to go back to Coastal Commission and discuss our approach. Coastal Commission is asking if the peripherential parking districts should be incorporated into the LCP. Um, and while they don't necessarily have to, um, you know, it would obviously be preferred if it was. Um, we would just like to discuss with them um and understand their, um, understand their desire and their, um, their confusion on this one. Next slide, please. And then just to summarize again, our recommendations for further action. Our comment ones on sea level rise, we really, this was more of just a, just a FYI to everyone involved in, in the project that these comments are, or these, this language is being requested to be addition, or is requested to be added into the LUP as coastal has provided. Our recommendation on the sea level rises that relates to land divisions is to really clearly define that beachfront lot to prevent application to other lots in the city. We will, on comment number three, we will clarify the development versus redevelopment and hopefully open up the floor for discussion with coastal commission before taking further action. The comment number four, we would just appreciate direction in, or opening up the short-term rental permits for new applicants, if there's interest or not. And then comment number five is just, again, a notice to everyone that we will be discussing this approach with coastal commission to see if these, they should be incorporated into the LCP. And Barry, I believe that is our final slide. I would, unless you have anything else to add, I'd welcome, welcome thoughts and consideration and open the floor for any questions from, from myself or the project team. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I comment first? Sounds like you're having trouble with Zoom.
There we go. It's, no, it wouldn't unmute. Yes.
I just, I just wanted to ask if they could back up a slide, I think to page 10. Right. So we can have these, each of these items in front of us when we discuss them.
Excellent.
So that other people in the audience can see what we're talking about.
Okay. Did you want to go ahead with any comments or questions?
Not yet. I, I will probably want to do that as we get down into the comments. I don't know how you're going to set this up. If we go through comment one, comment two, three, or each of us says, this is how I feel about comment three or four or five. I don't know how that.
Why don't we, why don't we try doing general comments referring to any one of the numbers one through five? So pick, you know, pick whichever ones you wish to speak about.
Well, as long as I've got my mute button off. The definition of beachfront lot ought to be fairly easy to do. It depends on where they're going to consider beachfront. You know, does it go all the way up to Boeing or does it stay on the immediate beach? And comment three, development versus redevelopment. I think that is a discussion to approach with the coastal commission. Cause it really is a matter of definition. You know, it's each one's going to redevelop separately, maybe redevelopment means a broader sense of a project instead of develop. I don't know. I, I don't know what they're thinking. And for visitor accommodations, in terms of opening up short-term rental permits, that's fine and good, but there is no mechanism for keeping them anywhere near affordable. So what is the coastal commissions stand on putting short-term rental permits in place or forcing us to put short-term rental permits in place? If there are no benefits for moderately income people to take advantage of them. Which, you know, we, we went through this early in my public career here. I, I think when I was on the planning commission, we now require, or we did require conditional use permit for short-term rentals. And then we put in a moratorium on any new applications. So what do we have to do? Open them up again? I don't think the neighbors will be happy because they're the ones that really came out and objected to really, to the active, the activity of short-term rentals that were adjacent to them. And I'm confused about the parking. I need, I need to, I sort of understand what they're trying to say, but I don't know, maybe I'm just dense. And I need somebody to explain this to me. And that's all I have.
Mr. Mayor, do you, would you like staff to address these as we go or just wait till the end?
I was muted again. Yes, I would prefer that you, you and staff make comments now. I mean, as they come up, and I think it'll help to, you know, keep in mind, you know, what the responses were.
Yes, sir. Noel, if you could join me on these responses, I'll probably point several of them toward you. First one is what constitutes beachfront, a beachfront lot? Can you describe that quickly?
Yes, we would, we would define that in the LUP as one of the property boundaries, you know, abutting the sandy beach. Definitely not including any definitions of any inland as constituting a beachfront lot.
Okay, that's a good answer.
I am to please.
Moving towards item number four with the short-term rentals, Councilmember Masalavit, you're correct that, and I think Noel would touch on this. There's nothing that the coastal can do to require us to restrict the cost of those. So they could be very expensive and not necessarily affordable. And you, you kind of pushed in as to what, whether or not the commission, I believe, could force the city to allow more short-term rentals. And, and that's really not the case. It's just something that they'd like to encourage the city to consider.
Yes.
I like that answer too.
Yes, and a coastal, coastal commission has, has released guidance in the past that has clearly indicated they cannot and will not. They do not have the legal authority to mandate the cost of any, any visitor accommodation, whether that's a hotel, a short-term rental, campsite, what have you. So, so there's no need to worry about that one either.
Okay.
And, and then Noel, can you touch again on exactly what the coastal commission is recommending or requesting through their comment number five on parking?
Yes. And to be quite honest, they, their comment is fairly nebulous in general, especially the last sentence. They just want to discuss preferential parking districts with the city. What I would venture to guess that they're getting at is that generally speaking, preferential parking districts are not preferred from the coastal commission's perspective. Going back to their, going back to their policy area of public access, there's always the thought on their behalf that preferential parking districts could potentially restrict visitors from parking in coastal areas. However, going back to the permitting authorities and approved CDPs that we've walked through, I don't believe that this is really the issue. I think that they probably just need to be walked through the permitting history and that these preferential parking districts were in fact authorized under a CDP in 2004. So, so hopefully not too complicated of an issue, but bringing that forth in a discussion and, and outlining this permitting history and, you know, making the case that this should be, since it was permitted, it should be incorporated into the LCP. And then understanding coastal's stance if they have a legitimate reason for why it shouldn't be incorporated into the LCP. Unfortunately, I wouldn't be able to speculate on why that would be, but hopefully once we discuss, we'll be able to know further.
Just can I make a comment on comment three? There was some talk in the staff report about leaving Surfside as like an independent community that would have to deal with the coastal commission on its own. Do you have it? I mean, I, I understand what you said that the coastal commission doesn't feel as though it has jurisdiction over their beach because it's private. So would that make it easier for the city to approve or disapprove projects there? Or does it make it more complicated so that Surfside has to become its own little independent area that has to deal with the coastal commission on its own?
Yes, that's a, that's a great question. And Barry, if you don't mind me just jumping in. We, that option to exclude Surfside from the LC, the LUP, its official term is called the deferred certification. That's just an option on the table for, for us to know and for us to be aware of. I definitely would recommend allowing our team to discuss our approach with coastal commission to see if there's a way to negotiate some policy language or a negotiated approach that is advantageous on behalf of both the city and Surfside and, and, you know, approved by coastal commission. Before we, you know, to hopefully include Surfside into the LUP so that the city could issue permits for things like the, the redevelopments, like we were talking about. If someone has a one-story and wants to add a two-story, it would be, it would be much more efficient to come through the city for something like that versus coastal commission. That being said, you know, we can't predict how coastal will, how, you know, how, how this approach will, will be discussed with coastal. If it doesn't look like there's a way to move forward in a way that is both acceptable to the city and coastal commission, we could enact the, the deferred certification area that we were talking about. It's just a tool in the toolbox and an option on the table if, if, if discussions and negotiations are, you know, don't.
That's what I was thinking. It would be our fallback position.
Yes, yes.
Okay. All right. I think those were my questions.
And Councilmember Masalavit, just to clarify one more thing, if we were to go that route, if the city council was to make that decision at some later date, the, the rest of the city would benefit of having an LCP. Surfside would be in the same position they are currently with having to go through.
Yeah, I get that.
Okay. Mayor, this is the chief real quick, if I can jump in for one second.
Sure.
Ms. Steele and Barry, I was wondering if maybe we can also have another conversation with Julie Dixon, if she can be roped into some of these questions that relates to parking. I think it's kind of beneficial to have her on that parking project and then she might be able to provide us some guidance in the future as well. Just a thought.
Absolutely, chief. Thank you.
Very good. Okay, let's move to Councilmember Barapapa. Your questions, comments?
No, thank you. Very informative and good questions. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Sistarsik.
Oh, thank you. Um, I, 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 maybe I'm wrong, but what I thought Surfside was people were not allowed to enter through Surfside, but if you park down south of there, you are allowed to walk up the beach because their property includes part of the beach, but not all of the beach. Is that not public access or am I wrong?
You're correct, councilmember.
Okay. And as far as the, the, the short-term rentals, I was at council meetings where the residents came in and talked about out of state or off-site owners, they're, they're, they're here to have a good time. They're partying, they're bringing cars, they're friends, and they're parking up the streets. They're up till midnight right outside their windows. It was not popular at all. So that's, that's a lot with everyone being so close. So anyway, that one, I think you need to go in carefully if you're looking at opening that one back up. So anyway, those are my comments. Thank you.
Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor. How many permits are allowed now for a short, short-term rentals?
Councilmember Moore, I believe there are 16 grandfathered approvals.
So what, is there a sense of if we increase that a small amount, if coastal commission would be receptive to that?
Noel, I, I don't know if you have any idea as far as a, a number that they'd be looking for. And I know it's basically just something that they were suggesting this to reconsider.
Yeah, and they're not, they're not so much looking for an exact number. You know, an option could be to include a policy in the LUP to study this item further. I know we certainly don't need to make a decision right now or even in the LUP before it's adopted. But to make a policy that includes studying the issue further and identifying a, maybe, you know, a potential for additional units to be added onto the market, right? So the accommodation market, that's certainly a, a solution that I think that they'd be, they'd welcome.
Okay. For, for the parking one, you mentioned during the presentation that, that the meters on Main Street, how does that relate to your suggestion for approaching the preferential parking districts?
Oh, so the meters, um, the meters on Main Street and the preferential parking districts were established under the same coastal development permit. So the parking meters on Main Street is less of the issue. It was just a note that they were, they were authorized under the same, the same CDP at the same time.
Is, is that referring to the meters at the lots near Main Street? Cause of Main Street doesn't have meters currently.
Yes, it's the lots of Main Street.
Oh, sorry, Barry. Yes.
Councilmember, it is the lots off Main Street at the 100 block and along electric.
Okay. Anything else? What, what do you see as the next step here and what, what's the timing?
In terms of the next step would be using some of this feedback that we've received today, including some of our feedback that we received on the visitor serving accommodations to meet with coastal commission and start the negotiation process for the items that, that weren't further discussion. Michael Baker would continue incorporating edits into the LUP for review by, by the city planning staff team. And the next step would be coming to an agreement with coastal commission, sending out a draft land use plan and moving forward into the local implementation plan process and getting you a certified local coastal program.
Okay. Is there any estimate on timing or?
I believe our schedule needs to be updated, but I believe we had estimated about 14 months out or so for, to the certified LCP. But obviously that's dependent on a couple of factors in terms of how quick it is to get coastal commission on the phone.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I had a couple of questions. With regard to the definition of beachfront lot, it seems, and Barry, you could please correct me, that the conditions that they're imposing on, on lots that are being, you know, teardowns and, and rebuilds are the same that are being imposed on beachfront where you're not allowed to do anything to mitigate or prevent sea level rise like any. or prevent sea level rise like any kinds of barriers or anything like that. Not that that would be practical, but is that correct so far? That we seem to be including off-beach property as well?
Noel, can you talk about the, the difference in the way they consider the beachfront versus the rest of the, the lots that are in those areas?
Yes, of course. So based on the, the policy language that Coastal is recommending to include under comment two, it, it kind of looks like a lot that is a true beachfront lot on the sandy beach is considered to be in a hazardous location inherently, just because it's part of the, one of the property lines is adjacent to sandy beach. This application of issue of, of showing that you have to, or I guess maybe a better way to explain it. Applicants would only have to demonstrate that their project is outside of a hazard zone if it is truly located within hazard zone, right? So if there is an inland property that is showing that it is repetitively flooded or is otherwise at risk for sea level rise, then those, then those same policies would apply to the property, right? It would have to show if there was a redevelopment application or project application, it would have to show that those hazards would be mitigated. And it would be a very similar process as to showing, you know, if, if you had a property in a fire zone, you'd have to show that the property is self-mitigating, that it's not going to create a hazardous condition that, you know, for example, with the residents where people are going to be living in. So it, again, just to reiterate, for the beachfront lot purposes, it does look like that that is being held to a higher standard than the inland properties and that inland properties would have to be in a hazard zone before they would have to demonstrate this ability to mitigate against it. So you can't mitigate unless the hazards demonstrated to be.
This is, this is the conundrum that, that I think we possibly will face is that they are, are making decisions or recommendations based on a 50-year projection of sea level rise where staff was recommending not to allow a lot split on property in the 300 block on 17th Street. Which, you know, comes sort of into direct conflict. And perhaps a larger question is, in your discussion so far with the Coastal Commission, are they aware of the potential conflicts that will arise or that arise now with regard to the potential passage of SB nine and SB 10, which encourages lot splits, encourages high-density development? And the Coastal Commission is telling us, no, we don't want you to do that. And we don't want lot splits and we don't want you to increase density, which basically includes, pardon me, virtually all of Old Town. If you're, if it's being based on the 50-year projection.
So as part of this project so far, we have not discussed anything, any of these comments with Coastal Commission quite yet. So that would be the time to, you know, I would recommend bringing that item to Coastal Commission because I do think is, is an excellent point. So he's kind of receiving mixed messages from different state agencies, correct? So that is, is a question that I would recommend that our team brings to Coastal Commission when we discuss. I, as the policy language that they recommended stands, I don't think inherently it is problematic. However, the way that it, you know, it is applied by Coastal Commission in that, you know, that example that you had, Joe, from, from, I'm sorry, Mayor Comick. From that example that you had in terms of being prevented from having a lot split, a lot split in an area that is inland and that is showing to be in a 2050 hazard zone, but is not currently having the impacts of that hazard zone, you know, I think that that's also a question to bring to them at this time as well.
Okay. With regard to the short-term rental situation, you know, once again, it's very unlikely that if they are looking at allowing or encouraging short-term rental permits, that the fact is that none of them are low cost. I mean, we can demonstrate, you know, by giving them a copy of Airbnb or VRBO rentals that are currently approved in town, not to mention the ones that aren't. And they certainly aren't low cost or even moderate. The only possibility that I know of would be the, the area in the new First Street, you know, development that had to be set aside for visitor-serving overnight accommodations. And we still don't, I don't think we actually know, you know, how that is going to be developed in terms of, you know, who owns the property now? I think Shay Holmes still owns it, but whether or not, you know, that question, you know, will come up with regard to that. But as far as the rest of the short-term rentals, you know, I don't think they will be low cost under any circumstances. And furthermore, by increasing the number of short-term rentals, you're reducing your rental stock, which again is in conflict with the HCD, their directive and goal to increase housing density. So, you know, again, I think that as you guys negotiate, you know, with the Coastal Commission staff, that that maybe we can get them to sort of fess up to what is their plan? You know, what are they ultimately looking for? And are they aware of the, the conflict that they've really engaged in with HCD? And just my last comment would be, is, are we going to need to discuss with the Coastal Commission our BERM that we put up every year? I have heard that there may have been some, one of their questions, because it's never been permitted by the Coastal Commission. And of course, we started doing it before there was a Coastal Commission.
Yes, so we did receive a comment from Coastal Commission on that item. I believe it was in section, or LUP chapter two. Coastal Commission is aware that the BERM is constructed annually without a coastal development permit. Their recommendation in this comment is fairly minor, though, nothing to worry about. They have asked our team to address the annual BERM construction in the LUP policies. You know, their question was if, if the BERM is anticipated to continue, and obviously it is. And we would discuss its consistency with chapter three policies. So the chapter three policies is just the, the land use development policies. So the BERM would be consistent with those policies. Happy to add the discussion on behalf of the city. The final note from Coastal Commission does say that this activity does require a CDP, you know, an active or valid CDP. But like we discussed last time, the CDPs can extend for multiple years. A five to 10-year range is something within the realm of, of possibility, depending on, depending on the other biological concerns that might be present. I wouldn't be able to speak on that without the full understanding of it. But the programmatic CDP is, is possible to prevent, prevent you guys from having to go back to coastal annually since it is, it is an annual public works project.
Very good. Well, thank you for all the answers.
No worries. Yeah.
Any other comments or questions from council? All right, so I guess we are going to call for a motion in a second to consider these five issue items and to, that are identified. And we've provided the feedback and further guidance and, and you guys will continue to work upon, work on our behalf. So I may have a motion and a second.
We do?
Do we?
Do we have a motion?
I mean.
We're providing direction.
I know.
Do we need a motion?
Well, how do I say this? It says here.
I know what it says. I just, I don't know. Right about a lot of things. So.
Could our city attorney address this?
I, I think staff would, would appreciate kind of a, a formal blessing on the, the five points that have been made and the, and the way moving forward. So I would suggest a motion.
Okay.
Would be appropriate.
Okay, I'll move it.
Okay. Don't be shy. I may have a second.
I'll second.
Thank you. And city clerk, could we have a roll call vote?
Yes, Mayor Calmick, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Barapapa, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Sastarsik, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Masalava, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. That passes 5-0. Next, we have a, a brief study session with regard to vehicle replacement by leasing rather than purchase. So I'll call on City Treasurer and Finance Director Telford again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, members of the city council, city staff and community members watching at home tonight. Tonight, we are bringing to you the result of our research related to vehicle replacement options. If you recall, over the last two budget cycles, we have not budgeted for any new vehicle purchases in our vehicle replacement fund. During those budget study sessions, I've mentioned that we were evaluating options for vehicle replacement, particularly looking at the option to lease vehicles. Tonight, we'd like to discuss with the council the option of moving from a purchasing model to a leasing model, specifically the option of leasing with Enterprise Fleet Management. Next slide, please. During tonight's study session, we will be discussing the challenges that we are currently facing with the replacement of our fleet. And I will give a little background on what got us to this point. Then I will be introducing Enterprise Fleet Management to discuss their leasing model that many organizations are already utilizing. Finally, I will go over next steps and we will be available to answer any of our councilman, any council member questions. Next slide, please. Currently, the city's fleet includes 55 vehicles, which includes both public safety vehicles and non-public safety vehicles. Those non-public safety vehicles are primarily in our Public Works Department and our city pool vehicles. Many of these vehicles are more than five years old and many are even over 10 years old. This results in increased maintenance costs and fuel costs from our vehicles and sometimes means vehicles are taken out of place, or I'm sorry, taken out of service for longer periods due to extraordinary maintenance, which as we know is more common in older vehicles. In order for the police department, marine safety and public works to operate effectively, they need reliable vehicles to conduct day-to-day business in. Also, sometimes we forget that for those departments, their employees are in their assigned vehicles for the majority of their shifts. If their vehicle is out of service, it may mean it's one less vehicle patrolling or one less water truck responding to service requests. To address these issues, it takes a significant amount of capital, which the city has struggled with over the years. As you're aware, the city faced financial challenges from fiscal year 1617 through fiscal year 1819. And during those years, the city suspended the annual contributions to the vehicle replacement fund. Vehicles continued to be purchased, which, which used up the cash in the fund. Then with the passage of measure BB, the city was able to afford the annual contribution to the vehicle replacement fund once again, which started in fiscal year 1920. And of course, in March 2020, the COVID-19 pandemic hit. And for both fiscal year 21, I'm sorry, 2021 and 2122 budget cycles, the city was not able to satisfy aside funds for vehicle replacement due to budgetary constraints. These financial challenges have compounded over the years and have made it an insurmountable task to bring our fleet to where it needs to be through a standard purchasing model. Once the issue was identified, Public Works and Finance started looking at options, which led us to evaluate the possibility of leasing. It was recommended to us by a number of agencies to look at Enterprise Fleet Management. As many organizations, as many organizations have already had success transitioning to their leasing model. In fact, two of our neighbors currently use Enterprise today. We've been working with them for over a year now to review our current vehicles and evaluate our maintenance costs in order to build a replacement plan that not only allows the city to address the current state of the fleet, but address these financial challenges as well. Next slide, please. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce Fawn Kafka with Enterprise Fleet Management to discuss their analysis and observations of our fleet and the solutions their company can provide in helping us address these challenges. Fawn? Fawn, are you possibly on mute? Fawn, are you there?
I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
I can, but there's an echo.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, but there's still an echo. That seems better. Sorry, folks, bear with us just one moment.
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay.
Go ahead. No echoes. Go ahead. You're good to go.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. My name is Fawn Kafka and I've been with Enterprise for 25 years. We've been helping a lot of municipalities streamline the budget, capital budget process, bridge funding gaps and lower operational expenses for, ever since we've actually started as a private company in 1957. Next slide, please. And how we help our clients is through strategic acquisition planning. We help them with resale of their vehicles and take a look at the total overall cost of ownership of their vehicles, how to reduce administrative time and also control costs consolidation and capture data so that we can help you better manage your fleet of vehicles. Next slide, please. Enterprise is a company, we've been in business since 1957. We manage close to 2 million vehicles worldwide. We have about 9,600 locations. And we help a lot of municipalities with everything having to do with their fleet because we own and manage our own fleet of vehicles. So with the experience of managing our own fleet, we're able to provide the economies of scale and knowledge to help our municipal customers with their own fleet. Next slide, please. In Southern California alone, we are able to help give back to the state and local governments in $119 million with the tax revenues. We have about $239 million in purchases with local vendors and suppliers in Southern California. Our employees donate about $2 million to the United Way with matching contributions from our company. And we actually give back to our, the communities that we partner with in foundation grants, totaling up to about $680,000 annually. Next slide, please. Like Kelly mentioned, many of the cities that we work with, we've been doing business with them for many, many years. For example, the city of Santa Ana, we've been partnering with them for 23 years since 1998. City of Westminster since 2011, so over 10 years. And a lot of these cities, when we first met with them, have the same fleet issues that the city of Seal Beach faces today. And we've been able to help them grow their fleet, manage a better, more efficient fleet, bridge the funding gaps that they have so they can refresh their fleet in a more timely manner. And then also cut costs and improve the safety of the vehicles. Next slide, please. As a company, Enterprise offers everything that you see here in this circle. From acquisition of vehicles to funding, safety, maintenance, fuel, telematics. uh, from acquisition of vehicles to funding, safety, maintenance, fuel, none, telematics, and resale of vehicles. We understand that the city has an in-house, um, mechanics, and although Enterprise will help with the acquisition and the funding of the vehicles, the city will continue to maintain the vehicles in-house. Next slide, please. One of the ways that we help our municipal customers with having an effective vehicle lifecycle is really understanding three parts, uh, that make up the optimal time to replace vehicles. So as the vehicle depreciates, it is worth less and less money as time goes on. Uh, maintenance and fuel are the complete opposite. When you have a new vehicle, you're only doing oil changes on vehicles, so the maintenance is very low, and then as time goes on, the cost for maintenance and fuel increases. And the optimal time is where you see that sweet spot. Um, many times that is about four to five years. Um, and if the city continues to keep the vehicles for a longer period of time, maybe ten, fifteen, twenty years, then you will see that the value of the vehicles are worth less, but you're spending a lot more money on fuel and maintenance. Next slide, please. Here's a great example of our line power. Look at, um, a twenty-twenty F-150. If you look at the Ford's website, the retail pricing or MSRP is about thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars. Because the city is a municipal entity, um, you are entitled to get government pricing. So it's based on invoice minus all the rebates, um, using the source well piggybacking contract. Um, the price of the city would be about twenty-six thousand, one hundred and twenty-four dollars, which is a lot less than what the sticker price of the vehicle is. And I think, can you move this slide, uh, down a little bit to show the rest of it? There we go. And this slide shows that if we were to sell a one-year-old vehicle, that is a two thousand and nineteen F-150 crew cab with about forty-four hundred miles, the sale price would be twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred. And the city would buy that vehicle for about twenty-six thousand, uh, one hundred and twenty-four dollars. So you can see that, that city would actually make money, um, if we sold that vehicle with forty-four hundred miles and, and being one-year-old. Same is true for if we sold a two-year-old vehicle, um, with about twenty thousand miles on it. The sale price of that vehicle would be about twenty-five thousand, six hundred, and in essence, the city would pay about five hundred and twenty-four dollars of capital outlay to run that vehicle for two years because of the low mileage that the city is doing on the vehicles and the high rebates that we're getting from the manufacturers. However, most cities keep their vehicles for about ten to twelve years. So if you were to sell a two thousand and eight Ford F-150 with close to about a hundred thousand miles, that vehicle is only worth about thirty-five hundred dollars. So in essence, you're paying close to twenty-two thousand dollars for that vehicle. So that's where, um, the right time to cycle out vehicle becomes very important, in helping the city reduce its total overall costs of ownership of the vehicles. Next slide, please. We performed an analysis on the city's fleet. We did two, actually, one for non-public safety, all the city's public works fleet, and then another one for, uh, public safety fleet. For the non-public safety fleet, there are twenty-three vehicles in the fleet, and we're keeping all twenty-three vehicles. Typically, you cycle out non, um, public safety fleet at about eleven years, traveling about forty-six hundred miles. Our proposed cycle is to shorten that to about a four-to-five-year cycle, so our recommendation is four point three years. Um, currently, the city is spending about a hundred and thirty-eight dollars and ninety-one cents on maintaining the public works fleet. Um, with a shorter term, the proposed maintenance would be about twenty-seven dollars and one cent to maintain the vehicles because now you're looking at a newer vehicle with safer features, and, um, you're only doing oil changes on those vehicles versus the older vehicles that have higher ticket items like engine transmission issues. So the city actually, uh, would save on fuel as well because currently, the old fleet, um, has about ten miles per gallon, and the new fleet would have about twelve point five miles per gallon, um, on the vehicles. If you look at the orange bar in the middle of the page, this is what the city is currently doing with your fleet of vehicles. So the city has about twenty-three vehicles in the fleet. Typically, you replace about one vehicle, um, every year. Uh, like Kelly mentioned, because of capital shortfalls, some years you're not replacing vehicles, some years you're replacing a few more, but on average, you're replacing about two vehicles every year. So you own twenty-three vehicles, you lease zero. The cost paid cash for the two vehicles is about sixty thousand dollars. You're not currently leasing right now. The city is spending about thirty-eight thousand dollars to maintain the vehicles, thirty-one thousand dollars to fuel the vehicles, so the total fleet budget is about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Our recommendation for the first year is for the city to replace four vehicles, your own nineteen vehicles, you lease four. And, um, with the vehicles that we're leasing, we can also help the city with aftermarket coordination. So any spare beds, utility bodies, toolboxes, we can include that into the cost of the lease as well. And that is where you see that twenty-one forty-five, that's the cost of some of the aftermarket for the vehicles. The lease cost for four vehicles is about twenty-eight thousand dollars. We would help the city sell the four vehicles that you have that are older in your fleet, and that we estimate to be about twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars. The maintenance cost would decrease from thirty-eight thousand to about thirty-two thousand because now four of the new vehicles in the fleet are newer and require less maintenance. Fuel is the same, decreases from thirty-one thousand to about thirty thousand. So your overall fleet budget actually decreases from a hundred and thirty thousand to sixty-eight thousand. In the first year, the city is actually saving sixty-one thousand dollars. Over a ten-year span, the total savings would be four hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. Next slide, please. With the public safety fleet, it follows the same format, thirty-two vehicles, um, with the, put to the bottom, ten-year savings of a little bit over a million dollars for the public safety fleet because I think the ma- biggest difference is that the maintenance cost for the public safety fleet is three hundred and thirty-seven dollars per vehicle per month versus if you have a newer fleet, um, the maintenance would drop to about eighty-nine dollars. So overall, the public safety fleet would have a savings of close to a million dollars over a ten-year period. Next slide, please. Enterprise is a company, we sell about one point one million vehicles every year. So we buy close to a million vehicles, and then we also sell close to a million vehicles. And we have a whole remarketing department that employs about seven hundred dedicated employees, and that's all they do is sell vehicles on a daily basis. So over year-over-year, we typically outperform, uh, what we call black book or the wholesale market um, by eleven percent. And lately, with COVID and the microchip shortage and all the parts shortages, um, new vehicles have become very, very limited. Um, so this, the, the sale price of used vehicles have skyrocketed, and in July, um, twenty twenty-one versus July of twenty twenty, we've seen an increase of about over twenty-four percent of the prices for used vehicles. So now is a great time for the city to start a program that would help cycle out the old vehicles and get new vehicles into your fleet. Next slide, please. And how we utilize the program is through an open-ended lease. So with the open-ended lease, it is not like a traditional dealership lease where you have a set amount of mileage and then over-mileage charges if you go over, early termination penalties if you, um, want to get out of the lease early. So that type of lease we can also do, but we do not recommend that for the city's program because the city has commercial used vehicles, and you will have dings and dents on those vehicles because you're using it for everyday business for the city. We would recommend an open-ended lease structure, which means there's no mileage restrictions, no abnormal wear and tear, and no early termination penalties. The city has all rights of ownership, and at the end of the term of the lease, the city has all rights to that equity of the vehicle. So for example, if a vehicle is twenty-five thousand dollars in delivered price, if we write it down to zero, that's straight finance. With this open-ended lease structure, we would leave a reduced value of about ten thousand dollars. At the end of the term, we would sell that vehicle to the city, and we would sell that vehicle for about seventeen thousand, five hundred. And that leaves the city with seventy-five hundred dollars in equity. All that money belongs to the city, and if you would like to use that as a down payment on the new vehicle, that would dramatically, um, lower the monthly payment for your next new vehicle. And that's the, the main basis of the open-ended lease is that the city has all rights of ownership, and all the equity goes back to the city to put back into the fleet replacement plan. Next slide, please.
I'll actually take over from here, Fawn.
Thank you.
So what does all of this mean to the city of Seal Beach? With the leasing options from Enterprise, we are able to replace a vehicle sooner, achieve a lower toast, total cost of ownership by maximizing discounts and resale value, reduce maintenance costs, thereby saving the general fund money, and ensure the city's fleet, both public safety and non-public safety, is operating efficiently and effectively. Next slide, please. To wrap things up, our goal tonight is to introduce the vehicle lease option and to discuss any questions that the city council may have. A, a very similar presentation was given to our executive team and members of staff, and overall, the response was favorable, and Enterprise was able to answer, uh, all of the questions they had. And they did have the opportunity to ask a number of questions, um, which we would expect from the council tonight as well. Um, once we obtain feedback from city council, uh, we will work with the city departments to finalize the initial vehicle list, uh, request list, and then bring back the final request list and a master lease agreement for city council consideration at a future city council meeting. Next slide. And that concludes our presentation, and we're available with, for any questions.
Thank you, Kelly. Uh, let's start with, uh, with Mike Verapapa. Do you have questions?
Oh, yeah, just a couple, uh, quick ones. Um, what model, like, for example, what model F-150s? Would that include, um, the XL, XLT? I wouldn't imagine a Lariat or Limited, but what, what, how would that work?
The beauty of this program is that we have any vehicle that the city needs at our disposal. Um, and it's really dependent upon what the vehicle's uses are intended to be. Um, you know, what, what, um, really the department needs. Um, the way Enterprise works is we would order these from the factory through Enterprise, so they would be built to spec. Um, particularly for public safety, um, that's one of the, uh, big selling points with, uh, Enterprise is they get the vehicle that they want, uh, with the financing that helps the finance department, um, and it, they don't have to worry about what's available on the lots. They build it custom for their needs.
So for the examples that you showed with the dollar figures, what, what type of vehicle? What model vehicle was that then? I mean, because you kind of gave some scenarios on the brief lines, slides. Was that just a basic model, or was that?
Typically, it is a work truck, uh, crew cab. So what the example shows is a crew cab work truck.
Oh, pardon me, a what truck?
A crew cab work truck, uh, XL.
An XL, well, okay. Is that currently what the city has now, or XL versions?
I'm not actually sure. I don't have that, the vehicle list in front of me. Uh, I could pull it up. Um...
I'm just curious, maybe for next time you could, um, bring it with you. And then, um, because it's, it's obviously nice to compare apples to apples. I mean, we don't want to, you know, price out one car and then, you know, either downsize or upsize or whatever we're doing with these other vehicles. Now, you, you said that they're, they come equipped with all the equipment needed, like, um, you know, beacons above the, uh, on the roof and, and extra lighting and maybe radios and such. Um, is that, is that the case? I mean, I know, I know they could be built however we want, but for the price that's being shown, is that including that with that price?
Yes, that pricing includes the aftermarket for the vehicles as specified by the city. So if the city is looking for beacon lights or toolboxes, bin liners, utility bodies, we worked with Kelly and her team to put together the pricing based on what they currently have apples to apples.
And, and what about, um, and how long was the lease roughly? I forgot, I, I missed that part.
I'm sorry, can you, question?
What, what was the lease term? Was it two years, three years, four years?
Five years.
Five years? And, and what about, um, like electric vehicles or electric trucks? How does that come into play?
Enterprise has access to electric vehicles as well. A lot of our customers right now utilize hybrid vehicles, electric vehicles. Some also utilize CNG vehicles. The Enterprise can access any of those electric vehicles, um, as the city wishes based on the, um, infrastructure that the city currently has.
Is that currently more expensive, or a lot more, or a little bit more, or how, how is that option coming to play?
Yes, uh, electric vehicles are typically about five to seven thousand dollars more than its gas comparables.
And the gas price you showed on your slide was three dollars a gallon?
That is based on the gas price that we used for the analysis. In Seal Beach, I think it's a little bit over four dollars, but we are very conservative in our analysis. So if we use four dollars, the savings would be a lot higher.
Okay, alright. Um, I'd like to see, not right now, but like to hear some of the feedback from, you know, some of the, um, vehicle users at, at some time, just so I can kind of get their input. But, um, that's it for now, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Uh, how about, uh, Tom?
You? This looks really good. Uh, thank you for the presentation. What, uh, if we get locked into these leases, I didn't look carefully at the agreements, but can, like, five years from now, is there the, the risk that these leases increase quite a bit, or what, what's in the, uh, agreement?
The, with the open-ended leases, the city would pay down on the vehicles, um, every year. So it is fixed and guaranteed for the term of the lease. At the end of the five-year term, the city has the option to either buy out the vehicles, extend the lease for another year or two, or, um, have us sell the vehicles and, uh, get the city a new vehicle.
And if I could add to that, um, one thing I do want to point out about this program is the only commitment the city would be making, and, and of, of course, this isn't an item that's before you tonight. This is something we'd br- bring back in the future. When we were to present a lease agreement for consideration, the only commitment the city has is to lease the first year of vehicles. Essentially, the vehicles that we would place on order, um, with the, the signing of the agreement. The, the annual cost associated with those vehicles, um, is fixed. So it's very similar to a loan financing rather than a lease financing. The difference is that there is a residual va- value built in, and as Fawn mentioned, you have a number of different options at the end of that term. But we are not committed, um, say, we don't, you know, this program isn't necessarily working for Seal Beach the way that we had hoped it would, and we go down the path of year one, and when we get to year two, we decide not to replace, um, any additional vehicles through leases. We are not obligated to. Um, it is only the first year of leases that we would be obligated for.
Okay, that's all my questions, thanks.
Okay, let's see, who have I missed? Uh, Shelley?
Um, yes, I, I also had a question about the, uh, the aftermarket or the, it see, it takes quite a bit to outfit those, so I was just quite wondering if that penciled out, but since it's built in, that, uh, that sort of answers that question. But since it's built in, that uh, that sort of answers that question. Um, since there is a shortage of new vehicles now, are we going to have problems finding the vehicles that we want? And did you say that any rebates there are that we would get, we would be able to get those?
Yes, any rebates that um, the, I guess we would call it municipal rebates, the city would be entitled to. So the pricing plan based on the source well contract would be invoice pricing minus all the rebates the city.
And um our vehicle, our, our certain vehicles hard to get now if we want, if we want uh police cruisers or, or maintenance trucks? Uh, are we limited in what we can pick?
The ideal plan would be to factory order the vehicles from the different manufacturers. So for the police cruisers, we would order either the Ford Explorer or the Dodge Chargers, whichever models the city would like to order. And then for all the other vehicles, we would recommend that the city orders directly from the manufacturer. Get exactly what you want. The manufacturer will build it exact to the specs. And then when it's done, they will ship it out to a dealership in Orange County and then we would deliver it to the city. If there are no aftermarket, if there is aftermarket, Enterprise would actually take the vehicles to the aftermarket vendors. Um, and then when it's ready, turn key to go, we would deliver it to the city and that's when the city would pay for the vehicles. So even though it will take several months for the uh, that factory to build the vehicles, the city does not have any upfront costs until we deliver the vehicles to the city.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Councilmember, it's a star stick. If I could add one more thing, um it, sure. Especially because our departments did ask this question when we were evaluating the lease option. Um, Enterprise has two options when they looked for a vehicle for the city. They can factory order or Enterprise can purchase straight off of a lot, just like we can. Um, right now, the factory orders are um a bit behind where we would like them to be. Um, and a lot of that is because of the, the chip shortage that the vehicles use, um which every dealership across the country is experiencing. Um, so ideally, and this is part of why we're pushing to bring this to council today and then hopefully at the first meeting in September for consideration. We'd like to get these vehicles ordered as quickly as we can because of that delay. Um, here, if we were to, to wait a little bit longer, um we also have the, the potential of having to wait for the next model year, which would cause a couple more months delay, but a lot of that is because of the chip shortage.
Okay, thank you very much.
Uh, I just, I want to clarify with regard to uh upfitting. Um, I'm assuming that um the installation of the extras, whether it be running boards, toolboxes, bed liners and all of those things that Enterprise would take care of. But I, uh, I would ask, and it, that doesn't include the upfitting of computers, uh radios, sirens and, and you know, emergency lighting. I assume that we would continue to take that vehicle to an upfitter?
Actually, Enterprise will take care of that for us. Um, we can use any upfitting company that, that uh the police department, that marine safety or public works wants to use. Enterprise will deliver the vehicle to those upfitters, put all of the equipment in it that is necessary and then Enterprise will pick it up and deliver it to us fully equipped with everything that we need, ready to use. Um, the only reason that Enterprise is involved is because they roll the cost of those add-ons into the price of the lease. So we're able to finance those costs as well, but there are no restrictions on the type of equipment or the vendor um location even. Um, that's, that is fully determined by the city.
Got you. Well, that's good. Um, you know, I can offer um one endorsement. Um, I've spoken with the um just retired uh deputy chief of the Santa Barbara County Sheriff's Department. And they've been using Enterprise for some time and are very, very pleased with uh, with that relationship. So I thought I would just put that out there. And the idea of leasing, I mean, it would be certainly new to us, but it's, it's really no different than um, there have been companies um that are not car dealers, but they're just leasing companies and you can lease a uh, you know, a, a, a big piece of heavy equipment or you can lease a truck or you can lease a car. And in this case, you know, Enterprise is, you know, leasing um automobile and, and trucks and so forth. And providing in a sense what amounts to sort of no down financing and great service. And uh with more options in it, if we go to a dealer and try and, and try and find the vehicles we want um on our own and then have to deal with all of the ups and extras and upfitting and so forth. So um, you know, from a financial standpoint, it seems to be that to me anyway, it seems to be a, a, a great way to go. So any other questions?
I have a couple.
Sure, Sandra, go ahead.
Um, have, I noticed the uh book rate was a comparison to the lease uh opportunity. What, did you do any comparisons by any chance, Kelly, to the uh California, the state of California vehicle purchasing program that we've been tying into uh for years in order to get um a discount on cars we purchase? Um, or vehicles that we purchase? Have you done any comparison to what that might be, to what this is? In terms of just purchasing?
Sure. Um, in terms of purchasing, we are able to get uh manufacturer discounts, which we're, we traditionally are purchasing from the lots, from, from other, from fleet departments at dealerships, um even through the California program. When I first got here and started looking at our trial balance and looking at the vehicle replacement fund, um I did look at the purchasing options, especially because we were right in the middle of budget development for fiscal year uh nineteen, oh goodness, twenty-twenty-one. Um, but the, the fact of the matter is we just don't have the capital. That's our biggest challenge. Even if it were ten percent cheaper um to purchase, we, you know, we only have so much cash flow and, and there really isn't a surplus at this point. Um, but we are in dire need of ordering some vehicles, um particularly in our police department. And there's a little bit of money sitting in our vehicle replacement fund. Um, but once it's gone, it's gone and we don't have the capital to replace other vehicles. So we're looking at more of a holistic approach to addressing the quality of the fleet as a whole. Um, and when we looked at the purchasing option, it was really going to be, um, I, I hate to use this term kicking the can down the road, but it kind of was. We would have solved the short-term solution, but not really solve the long-term problem.
One of my question, well, my next question was going to be, how much is in the replacement fund? And how much will be available to lease vehicles uh uh with a startup of the program? Are we going to be able, are we going to be able to fund a, a full replacement of the cars that are, or vehicles that need to be replaced?
So in year one, that's actually a really good question. In year one, um there, there are a number of vehicles that need to be replaced in year one that we will not have the funding for. Um, what we've done uh is worked with Enterprise to build out a five-year full replacement plan. Um, looking at the, the highest priority vehicles first in that, in that year one. We worked with the police department and public works to determine what that list looked like. And then in the future years, um this is a commitment that we really need to make in order to get the fleet back to where it needs to be. Um, it would be one of the first items that we would budget. Uh, right now, we do have a little over four hundred thousand in cash sitting in the vehicle replacement fund. So I would propose that those be the first funds used um to pay for uh the, the year one uh vehicle leases. Um, that would be more than enough to pay for that as well as any upfitting costs that are necessary. Um, and then like I mentioned, we would budget it going forward so that we had full replacement. Um, one of the things that I do want to point out is a number of years ago, um I believe it was either maybe two thousand thirteen or two thousand fourteen, um we went through this very same process. Um, we had a third party come out and take a look at our current vehicle replacement program or back then what was current. And they developed a funding plan to make sure we always had money in our vehicle replacement fund to ensure vehicles were being replaced in a specific, in a certain timeline. Um, we follow, we were able to follow that plan for the first few years. And then in fiscal year sixteen-seventeen, when money got tight, it became very challenging to fund the three hundred and ten thousand that was supposed to be set aside every year. That really has, like, it has posed another challenge that we're trying to address. Um, so clearly, the, the purchase option hasn't been working for us. We anticipated doing that after the two thousand thirteen review. It lasted for a few years and we're right back in the same boat less than ten years later. Um, so we really are looking for a long-term solution. Um, and I, we really do feel like leasing is that, is that option.
Thank you.
Very welcome.
Thank you. Uh, just a question, does Enterprise ever, um, would they ever be interested or involved in any specialty vehicle purchases or leasing? Uh, whether it's a, a street sweeper type of vehicle or some of our, the specialty trucks that, that the city uses, whether it's a dump truck or, you know, a vacuum truck. I mean, they, they all are purchased by various manufacturers. So I mean, it, it's, it's still, it's the same um principle, but whether or not Enterprise is uh gets involved in any of those types of purchases and leasing?
It is an option with Enterprise, um but it's, it's an option to purchase the vehicle portion of it. It doesn't always make sense. Um, when we were going through the evaluation and analysis of our current fleet, we had that conversation with Enterprise. They currently do not do large, heavy machinery, vector trucks. If it's something that requires the body of a truck and it's just a matter of, of um of fixing equipment to the back of it, then we can lease the truck through them. But it would predominantly be public safety vehicles, um police and marine safety and uh public works, work trucks um that are not specialty equipment as well as our pool vehicles um that we have here at City Hall.
Gotcha. Thank you. Any other questions of staff discussion? Okay, well, thank you very much, Kelly, and thank you to Enterprise for a very concise uh presentation. Alright, here we are, adjournment. Um, we're now going to adjourn the city council to Monday, September thirteenth, twenty-twenty-one, which means the August twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one meeting has been canceled at five-thirty to meet in closed session if deemed necessary. So thank you, everyone, for your attendance and patience this evening and we will see you in September. Have a good evening.
Thank you.